So we're gonna go on here. Everybody in?
We'll do it by hand.
Okay.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you.
Except Brian's. Alright, let's stand for the pledge. I have the duty to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Alright, let's start with public input. Is there anybody here for public input one? Alright, you have three minutes. Please state your name and please do not mention any individual names of students.
Certainly. Hello, Julian Barretcliff. I spoke last week in the capacity as a parent of an autistic child and I pointed out to you that he's now commuting to Concomode to receive services and I've spoken with some of you individually since here and there. And there seems to be general agreement that clearly there's something wrong with that picture. You know, I also mentioned when I spoke last time that I think that special needs stands out particularly as an area that's crying out for some kind of shared service solution. It really sticks out like a sore thumb as being around the district here where we could get some kind of scaled solution if we shared services. I just wanted to share that, you know, that for what it's worth, and this may not be the right answer, but it's something I would throw out, as something I would suggest, the really qualified person here is Dr. Mears and she's probably got, A, she's got far more expertise than me and she's probably got better ideas as well. But I can tell you that, you know, that I have a relationship with a specialist institution, the one my son is attending in fact, which would be perfectly happy to talk to the school district about signing some kind of service contract to provide exactly the kind of very, very specialized resources and knowledge base and managerial capacity that would be needed because everyone's out of their depth in this subject, I freely admit that. I am, we all are, it's a very specialized subject. And, you know, that would be a really interesting thing to discuss quite possibly, but as I said, I'm sure Dr. Mears has numerous other thoughts on this, she's highly qualified and, you know, very thoughtful about it. I guess what I really want to say is, I just want the board to engage on this subject and acknowledge that it's something that should be tabled. I'm sure not tonight, you've got masses of work to do, that's why you're starting early, but I'd like it to be tabled and what I'd like to see happen is for the board to look into this subject and the possible ways ahead and to particularly engage as much as possible with Dr. Mears. That's what I'm here to say tonight, okay? Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here for public input one?
Hello, Kate Lawton. I wanted to follow up on my questioning from the last time I was here about whether or not you've been receiving weekly updates from the general contractors or the people that are managing Stellamaris. I know we're here to talk about Stellamaris and I was just curious whether or not you receive those and whether or not they're public so we can see them, the updates, that is.
Yes, actually, when you asked last time if we received one, we actually had come into Katie's inbox, it just hadn't been disseminated to the board yet, so we did get one that same night you asked and we've had them weekly ever since and they are posted on the website ever since the day that the first one came in.
Right, and how do you all, are you pleased with them?
I think that's a personal opinion and we're, this is public input, it's not a time to engage in dialogue, so if there's anything else you want to add to public input, that's great, but we do have a very tight agenda to get through.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else for public input? So, we're going to begin, unfortunately Katie was not able to join tonight, she sends her regrets, but all of the issues that she was going to present on have been delegated to other people. We'll start with a discussion of the Sag Harbor Learning Center financials.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to be here tonight. My name is Jennifer Buschami and I actually worked in Sag Harbor School District for a couple of years back in 2014, 2017. So I was here when the project, Stellamaris, when the idea originally developed and the church actually came to us to see if we were interested in purchasing the building and it was actually very nice of Katie to ask me to come back and look at some of the financial information, revisit some of the project and present tonight. So, and also while I'm here, since this is probably the only time I'll have to thank everyone, I'd like to just thank everyone in the community who have reached out to me and sent me their heartfelt thoughts and condolences during this past year and I, they were all very heartfelt and I really do appreciate everything and all the people who have contacted me through that past year, during that difficult time and the difficult time that my family has had. But, let's get started. So, this was a team effort, this presentation, and I work at Lori and Lori Down is in the business office and she really does keep track of the project throughout. She has worksheets and she really has every, an accounting of every single dollar that was ever spent on the project. So, working with Lori and then also with Ed and then Scott and Paul, we were able to put together this presentation and to just give you some background information on how we started and how the project has changed throughout the years. So, from the beginning, of course, we know that the vote, which was done in 2016, which was a couple of years ago, there are a couple of interesting things to note on the slide. You can see that the resolution for the vote is very vague. It basically notes that we were going to borrow $10.2 million to purchase the building and also construct various improvements. So it doesn't exactly state what improvements they were, but it does give us a threshold on what we can spend for those improvements from bond funds. We had a lot of voter turnout that day and the funny thing to note is that people actually turned out to vote on the project and they actually didn't vote on the budget. So we had more people who voted on this Stellamaris project because they were so interested in having their voice heard and they didn't even vote yes or no on the budget. So, that was a funny thing. So, these numbers on the side here, you can see you have the purchase price of the building, $3.3 million. We had the $6.3 million just to bring the building in compliance with SED regulations and then we added another $595,000 to that to be able to open the building as a pre-kindergarten. Now, those numbers were developed and those numbers were projections based on a BBS facility study. So BBS were, they were originally our architects, the district had used them for years and years and years and when we were approached by the church and we, the board wanted us to move forward on having the vote, we had to come up with an estimate of what it would cost to get the building up and running. So, BBS during the planning phase calculated that we would need roughly $6.9 million. That $6.9 million would be broken down into total funds available for construction and also total funds available for soft costs, architect engineering costs, construction manager costs. And you can see there were a lot of contingencies built into the project. So at the time, the board and administration, we felt very confident that this is really what we would need to move forward with the vote and this is what we would need to get the building up and running, based on the study during the planning phase. So at the same time, right after the vote, we were working with BBS and we were trying to get the field done at Pearson. And we were running into a lot of problems because we, our turf field went out to bid and we were $400,000. We were over budget and at the time, we didn't know what to do, we had to have two other votes in order to go with the soft field. So we were losing a lot of confidence in the architecture, in BBS. We lost a lot of confidence with them, just working through other projects with them. And we decided that we were going to issue an RFP and do a request for proposal to hire a new firm or maybe stick with BBS if they could go ahead and show us and prove to us that we weren't going to run into the same cost problems with this project as we did with the turf field project. So, those RFPs came back, I believe it was around November 2000, November 2016. And after meeting with a lot of different firms, we decided to, or the board decided to move forward and hire IBI, BCK firm to move forward with the project. And immediately, the first thing that they did was, they looked at the BBS facility study and they went through line by line to make sure that it was adequate and that BBS really did cover all of the work that needed to get done in order to open the building. And as they went through this, and you'll see on the next three slides, it's really just a breakdown of that facility study and comment, and you'll see the first column is the scope of the work. The second column is what BBS had stated that work would cost. Then BCK came in and said, no, this is what the work really will cost you. Then you have a difference column and then the two last columns are projects that could not be funded within the scope of the bond and we had to make a decision on how those projects would get done. So, the first column, actually, the second to last column, it's called coordinated capital improvement projects. Those are the projects that would have to get done in conjunction with all of the work that was getting done with the bond. And then you had a future project column, which was work that maybe we didn't get to have to get done immediately, but eventually we would need to get that work done. And that was the only way we were going to stay within our monetary limits of bond, is by breaking it up this way. And this was actually done in conjunction with the board. So this was presented to the board in October 2017 and we, I also had a lengthy, lengthy discussion with the educational facilities planning committee at the time in November of 2017. And we looked at the bottom and we totaled all these columns up and immediately we knew that we were short almost $2.7 million. So if you add up the coordinated capital improvement project column and you add up the future project column, we already knew before we even went out to bid, before we sent up the papers up to SED for approval, that we really needed an additional $2.66 million to get this building really up and running where it needed to be. And we needed to find funding for those projects.
Where is that $2.6 million on here?
When you add up the $1.7 on the last page and the $9.63, it comes up to $2,666,000.
But that was some, including future stuff?
This was including everything that really needed to get done to have the building up and running. Future projects really meant that those were items that didn't have to get done exactly at the same time that maybe the building work was getting done, maybe it could have gotten done in the future. But you'll see on the later slides that most of these, most of the work wasn't done because throughout, you know, this is three years later now and this scope of work has changed drastically based on what was actually discovered when they got into the building. So we'll talk a little bit about that.
One more question. So basically, the difference of the original budget versus the updated one from?
BCK.
It was about $400,000 less, 378.
No, well, that was just the work that we could fit into the bond project was, we were saying that we're going to put five, the original bond project was going to fund 5.5 million of that and we were going to take 2.6 and try to find it elsewhere.
No, 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 I'm just asking for here, between those two columns and the difference. Because you're saying this was the original BBS and this was likely updating from the ICI, right?
Yeah, this, well, I have, the difference is really what was going to be funded by the bond. So, the real difference is 2,000, $2,666,000 minus 378. That's really what the real difference is.
And the 378, sorry, sorry, let me just finish. So the 378 came because the new updated forecast from ICI was that it was going to cost a little less money than what BBS forecasted.
Yeah, all the items that we would be including would cost a little less because we were going to take all these other projects and move them aside and get additional funding for those. So, like for instance, when you, when you look at the slide from the planning phase, you'll see that during the planning phase, the original hard construction, real dollars for renovations, really came out to maybe 5.9. So, in order to stay within that 5.9 and also include contingencies, they were, BCK, IBI, they were able to plan out the work so that it would fall within those parameters and also have this 378 for additional contingency price escalation. So, really, when you're adding up all the yellow columns, that's really the amount of money that we would really need, is all the yellow columns to get done compared to the 5.879.
Just to get an understanding, thank you, I'm so happy you're here to explain it. When, I'm just trying to find the number on here that is beyond what was originally forecasted and budgeted for, that wasn't additional items.
Well, what I'm going to go through with you is, I wanted to go through some of these line items with you to give you examples of what wasn't included in the original estimates. So, the original BBS facilities study did not include a lot of code compliance items, did not include a lot of health and safety items and also security was not included. So, we're going to go, we can go through some of those big ticket items and I can actually start at the end here. So when you go to that last line, right above the line for the total, you're going to see abatement of confirmed hazardous materials. So BBS did not include any funding for the abatement of those hazardous materials and IBI basically came in and said, listen, we know you're going to have asbestos in that building and it's going to have to get removed and you're going to have to add at least $145,000 to the project to get that done. So that was something that was included with the bond funds. Another big ticket item was when you go up to this slide, and this is just like code compliance issues.
So what was the story with the playground? I'm sorry, what was the story with the playground? So, BBS budgeted for it and then IBI did not?
Nope.
Or it was just because it was moved as the outside the bond's code?
So, this is what happened with the playground. So right now, we had BBS estimating that it would cost $292,000 for the playground and IBI said, you know what, we're estimating it's going to cost 218. And you see it's in the coordinated capital improvement project, but right now, we can't get the playgrounds done with bond funds because we need to do things like asbestos abatement. So you're going to have to move that on to the other column as being something that's not essential in order to get this project approved by SED. So we need to be in code compliance, we need to have health and safety included in the bond, all the other items could get funded later on. But the playground did get done and the playground actually did get done for a little less than the 218. So we had purchased the equipment out of the general fund, we did some in surface area, we did through capital fund and then a lot of renewed contract included additional subsurface work for the playground. So, but I'm going to bring up some other items on here that are big ticket items that weren't included in BBS's estimates. So you have provide sprinkler system for basement level. This was something that was definitely needed because of egress issues and God forbid, there was a fire. So BBS had nothing in their original plan for sprinkler systems in the basement level and BCK, IBI said, no, you're going to need $250,000 to get that done. So we got to move that into bond funds now and you can see the 252 right there. You've got reconfigure plumbing systems for new building layout. That was an additional $145,000 that wasn't included in BBS's estimate. So we had to make sure we included that in the bond funds because that was also a code compliance safety issue.
So everything that's red, everything that's red with the number on it, in the BCK column, the center column, is stuff that wasn't included in the beginning but was required?
Yes, so, pretty much, mostly all the items in red. So you'll see there's another item for $327,000, that's a lot of money. This was to provide air conditioning for the south wing of the building. So there was nothing in the original planning phase that BBS did in their study to include any air conditioning in south wing of buildings, that was $327,000.
Was that required legally or we just opted to do that?
No, we needed to have air conditioning in part of building, especially if you were going to be running daycare centers and.
I'm just asking because we don't have issued parts of buildings.
I asked the same question because we decided to offer nursery and not have full day pre-K, we're required by law to have AC system and that's why we think of this.
Yeah, so there's definitely reasons behind all of these and also, Ed, it's here! There you go!
Because that's a really good question.
Yes, you stand right there, Ed.
My name's Ed Bernhauer, work as, for the architectural engineering firm for the district. The reason for that is Office of Children and Family Services is the authority having jurisdiction over all daycare centers in New York State. And for daycare centers, they require by their code to have air conditioning for any daycare spaces for children of particular ages. So, that's why that was added to the project.
It makes sense, but it sounds like it was an over, so the law hadn't changed, it was just an oversight.
Oversight, yeah.
A very expensive oversight.
Very expensive oversight. And you, of Chris and Diana, of course, you were with all the meetings that we had about the turf project and we were working under the same type of conditions, you know, basically they undercut every single item and we knew that when the bids came in that it was just going to be, they were ridiculously high compared to the original estimate. So that's why we had to not use them for this project.
My understanding is that if we decided to offer full day pre-K and we didn't get the nursery, we didn't need that cost, right?
I think that if the decision was made back then to do that, that could have been a saving, but back in October of 2017, when this was presented to the board and the educational facilities planning committee and all the administrators met, the decision was to move forward with that part of the project. So, so another big ticket item that was not included in the original estimate was providing casework for the classrooms and we knew that we definitely needed casework for the classrooms. That was another $261,000 hit. Then, all of the safety and security items that were not included in the original facility study, they're also included on here, but they're buried in various lines. So you'll see on the, on this slide, this is the one item you'll see for the $123,000. It's add security features to interior doors, so that was, nothing was ever set aside for that, but we felt, the board felt at the time that, you know, security was such a, was such a hot topic and we needed to have this building secure, especially with all of the young children in the building at the time. So this is just giving you a little background as to why we did not have the funds to begin with to really move forward with this project. Because during the evolution of the planning for the budget vote, the vote to purchase the building and then going with a different architectural firm because we lost confidence in BBS, we realized that there was this big hole that had to be filled. So.
But if we add up all of the reds, it's still not over $2 million, so.
No, because you still have a lot of positives and negatives from a lot of other lines.
Right, so if for more than, for more than $2 million over our budget, then it's not just items that were not caught by our previous firm, it has to be other costs, correct?
Yeah, you can go line by line and you can basically see where there were actually items that went the other way too. Items that went the other way where BBS might have estimated a little bit higher and they came in and said, no, you've actually saved a little bit on this one, because we know that. But then also you have to realize, this is two years later and when they actually awarded the contracts in April of 19, there were, there were some things that they noticed from 17 to 19 that have changed over time. Originally, they thought they were going to be able to repair some of the, I think it was some of the AC systems in the building, right? They were going to repair them and then when she took a really good look at them, they realized they couldn't repair them. So, the list has changed and evolved and you'll see that what I tried to do is, I tried to include some of the other updates that came along after that original list was provided. So, those pages that we just went through, those three slides, those lists were summarized in this one right here. So, this is really the summary of all of the items that couldn't get done through the bond. And on the top, you have all the coordinated capital improvement projects and these were the original estimates and the projections. And then underneath were the future projects that maybe didn't need to get done right away, but eventually would have to get done if you were going to stick with the original plan. So, right there, we were at total additional funds needed, $2,693,152. And this was also presented back at that October meeting. So, as I said, the projects have been added, removed and the cost projections have increased and decreased over time. So, from there, actually, let's go back to the October, sorry. This is just a summary of all of the work that would be included with bond funds. So you have a summary of all the work that was not going to be included with bond funds and then you have the summary of all the work that would be included in the bond funds. And that is summarizing those three pages of lists of the facility study comparison. So we were looking at originally spending $5,507 from the bond and these are the contracts that were awarded using those funds. So you have your general construction, your mechanical contract, your electrical contract, your plumbing contract and in total, the district awarded around $5.5 million bid out and awarded contracts for the project. This is a summary now of how that $10.2 million bond was spent to date. So, you have renovation and soft costs and you have a breakdown of every single dollar that that $10.2 million is paid up of. So at the $10.2, you have the $3.3 for the building, of course, and that's right in this column. And then you have all of the other construction costs and soft costs that came out of that $10.2 million. And when you go through, you'll see you have the renewed general contract, you have the Hirsch plumbers, you have the mechanical contract, you have all your soft costs here. So originally, we were estimating soft costs to be around a million dollars, so you're a little under right now with your soft costs. Palace Electric is right here. What I did was I included all the contingency allowances within their contract. So, you're not going to see change orders on this slide because right now, the change orders are really being covered by all these contingencies. So when they awarded that construction contract to renew, they said, we have $45,000 in your contract that we're going to be using for any contingencies that come along. So a lot of those contingencies haven't been spent, so that's why we're not including any change orders on here because it's not going to, right now, you're probably going to add to this number in the end instead of reduce it by change orders. Because you also received some positive change orders because of kitchen work that didn't get done. So you have your soft costs, which is architect, engineer, survey, legal. We had to pay city BOCs 20 grand just so that they could get this project approved in a timely manner. And then you have all your band and bond issue costs. We have legal, we have our fiscal agents that we pay and that's coming out to about $735,000. Your palace, your core BTS systems, and Scott could probably describe all of this a little bit better to me, but that is the PA system, clocks wiring. You have some flooring money that came out of this. You have Milburn, which was some ceramic tile that was purchased. This is all the casework. So originally, I think the casework was estimated at like 216. They actually ended up spending a little less on the casework, the 170. You have the whole fire alarm system that had to get purchased. Here is the surface area for the playground, so the equipment cost a little over $50,000. The surface area was about 41 and the balance and the difference of all the subsurface work was included in that renewed contract, which is right up here. You have all the garland roofing contract that was paid out out of here or the portion of garland that was paid out out of bond funds. You have advanced sound, which is the AV system, the large group instruction, multipurpose room renovations and you have all the wireless access systems all coming out of bond funds. So after we accounted for all of these costs that came out of bond funds, we're looking at, you have approximately $268,000 left of money in your bond that you could allocate for other things. And I think we're going to talk about that later on, of what you could allocate those funds for.
But if we've gone way over budget on this project, how do we have money left over?
Because a lot of the other projects were funded through general fund.
But why would we do that if we still had bond money left over? Why wouldn't we have depleted this before tapping into other budgets?
Because it's, oh, you could never, you'd never want to deplete all of this, especially when you have your big contracts in here, because you're always going to want to have some money for contingencies in here and the work isn't done, you don't really know what you're going to find. Right now, we're going to talk later on about, we have this, we have future renovations that, you know, need to get completed. I think we need to have a discussion about this retaining wall and this is something that really needs to get done immediately. So that is something that you could allocate bond funds for.
Can I ask you, I'm sorry, can I ask you a question? I have, I have to apologize, I have to step out for a little bit. And I just had one question I wanted to ask while you were both here. Initially, after the bond, because I went back and looked at all the documents and we have a lot, as you know, tons of documents after this was passed. After it was passed, one of the documents from the previous architectural firm that we all talked about that was supposed to be part of the current project was downstairs, that big space was supposed to be able to be used for all the students in the building. That originally it was designed that way. When we did the walkthrough, I remember hearing, and maybe I didn't hear correctly, can the students that are going to be in there use the downstairs?
Yes.
They can, okay. I just wanted to reconfirm that.
Yeah, there is a large group instruction area.
Yeah, in fact, that was when we talked about the sprinkler system issue.
Okay, so that allows.
That allows occupation of your lower level.
Alright, that makes sense because when we did the walkthrough, we were told they couldn't use it. But that, so I'm glad to hear that we can.
Jennifer, can I just make sure?
Actually, can I just follow up real quick? Sorry, there's actually, just to add to the item you asked about why not deplete the bond, the other thing to keep in mind too, when we split up the project, part of why we split it the way we did as far as the particular items is, there are certain, there's certain work that you actually need to publicly bid for those particular contracts. There's other work that the district actually can do their procurement through state contract or vendors that are on county contract, that's an easier process to do through a direct procurement. So that actually had a lot to do with which scope items went where. So if, you know, so that's how we kind of.
Well, the playground was a really great example of that because by purchasing the equipment out of the general fund, we were able to have. we were able to have a little more control over the design of the...
And it was all done through state contract.
Yes.
So that, so that's like one of the items that can be state contract. Um, major plumbing upgrades or, or plumbing changes or, or things like that, that really has to be done on, on the actual public bid side. So that was kind of a big reason of why certain scope items wound up on either side of that, whether it was on the bonded side or on the, uh, the actual general fund.
Well, and plus, when you're doing that allocation of what gets paid for by the bond and what has to get paid for by other funds, that process is done long before these bills start coming in.
Right.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't like wait two years.
Yeah, we definitely wouldn't know. I mean, to have a difference of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand out of ten point two million is not a small percentage variance. Yeah.
Uh, can we just make sure that this gets on the website after the meeting if it's not? And then I would just request, if the superintendent's here, I would ask her, but I'm going to ask you that, um, because it's been, this has been so long coming and this is fabulous, and I'm sure there'll be follow-up questions, but this has been like ten, eleven months of waiting. So this is great that we're getting it, that we get regular updates financially, because the project isn't done yet and we don't want to have to wait another four months or five months. So if we could, if there can be a process to do that, where it gets published, that'd be great.
Oh, yes. So Lori has all of those reports, so that's definitely something that she could provide on a regular basis, because she's been keeping an accounting of every single dollar that's been spent.
I agree. I mean, I think this is awesome and it's so helpful to see it. And so I think just kind of updating this maybe monthly and it'd be really good.
Yeah, that would be easy for you to do, because most of the information is already set up. So, um, it would be great.
I just had a couple of questions.
Uh-huh.
On page seven, you have total additional funds needed as of October two thousand seventeen, and that's two point six nine million. So that's needed over and above the bond amount.
The bond.
And that takes into account the two sixty-eight?
Well, this is actually all the work that was done with the bond. So back in October, because you have to talk, um, you have to think about the, what, what we were projecting versus what actually happened. So the two sixty-eight is really what, what the actual was, but back in October seventeen, when we had this, uh, the meeting, the meeting was actually on October fourth, the board meeting. Um, when we were going through this laundry list of items with the board, um, we summarized it. Actually, BCK summarized the list, and this is what they came up with.
I think that, uh, there's a short version. No, it doesn't. So the, the surplus that we're seeing right now on the bonded side, we're not applying that to reduce that two point six. It's the full two point six, sir, because we're, we're kind of waiting to see, you know, as we go, you know, how that's going to come out.
Oh.
Okay. And then my next question is just on page eleven, total funds needed as of May of two thousand nineteen, two point eight three million, again, on top of the original bond amount, but not applying the two sixty-eight.
Yes, correct. And that's, and that two point eight is updating that two point six.
Understood.
Yes. It's a lot of the same items.
And then is there any overlap between the one million that's still needed and the two point eight, or that's the one million plus two point eight?
No, a lot of those one million items that were for future projects were included in this two point eight under future projects. So if you'll see like the theatrical lighting system and theatrical sound system is part of that one million, and it's part of the two point eight.
So, so really to, like, projected, if we were to go through with everything and this total projected amounts are the ten point two bond plus two point eight?
Yeah, I have that on here. Well, right now, this is what you're looking at.
Yeah.
You're looking at ten point two, plus you're looking at cost of projects not included in the bond is what we spent at a general fund, two point five. And you're looking at total completed costs is two point eight, uh, twelve point eight.
Okay. So then, in that case, then the total completed costs, while still very significantly over the original amount, are expected to be less now than they were as of October of two thousand seventeen?
Yes, and less as of, uh, May of, of eighteen.
Okay.
So, okay. So I want you, so I wanted to give you a full accounting of the bond funds. And that's really this. This is how all the dollars of the bond were spent. So now we're going to talk about the general fund and the projects that were not included with the bond funds and how those items were, were, um, completed and what the status is of that list. So the updated lists, um, that BCK I D I Group, uh, provided us in May of nineteen, updated that October list and went through each of these items to find out what was actually done and what wasn't done and what still needs to get done. So the good news is, is when you go to the next slide, which is slide twelve, pretty much everything was done. Everything that needed to get done to open the building was pretty much done. Um, a lot of duplicates were, I took, I got rid of all the duplicates and, um, I did include some of the color coding from the original list. And, um, I did include a comparison of original budget to what the P O or what the award was. Oh, did I just do that? Because I didn't, I do know that, um, during the last meeting, you were looking for a comparison of what the original budget would be compared to what we actually spent. So you could really go line by line and see that, um, a lot of what we spent was less than what the original budget was. And this all came out of general fund money. This was all done through, um, budget transfers or appropriated fund balance. And it was done through, um, over the course of two and a half years. So this is the total amount spent at a general fund dollars is the two million, five seventy-six, nine sixty-seven. And some of this work is still outstanding. This is all of the purchase orders that have been placed. And this is all the work that's been done. So...
So Jennifer, sorry. So the two point five seventy-five, we already spent it like through the general budget, that we allocated to transfers?
Yes, over two and a half years of budgets. You've actually funded this. And I'm going to show you later on how that happened. And, um, just so you have a good idea of, of the process and how, and how, um, it worked here during that time.
So let me ask you, so what do we need to spend more to get this done?
Well, I'm going to, well, I'm going to show you the, the future project list, which really is some wish list items and some other items that need to get done immediately.
And can I just say, let's all, let's try to hold all the rest of the questions for the end, just because I just want to be sensitive at the time. It's six ten and we have a few more agenda items and we have to, we have a hard stop at six thirty.
And a lot of our questions may get answered if we just let her...
And we have, we have a hard stop at six thirty.
Sorry. So, um, so we went through this. So this is right now the projected cost of completion, because this includes the bond and all the general fund money that was spent already on the project. And this is, these are all the budget transfers that supported all those general fund dollars. So you spent, uh, approximately two million, five seventy-six at the general fund. And these were all the budget transfers that came out to two million, five ninety, that was done over the course of two thousand seventeen, eighteen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and two thousand nineteen, twenty. So I think that, um, I mean, I was anticipating the next question being is how, um, were we able to do this over time through the budget? And, um, you know, how is that possible? So I wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot, and I know this is very difficult to read on the slide, but I think on your handout, you could really see exactly, um, how the funds were used. So the budget here, you, I started off in two thousand ten on your financial condition over time slide. And you'll see in two thousand ten, when you look at the slide, the whole top of the slide talks about budget to actual. The middle of the slide is revenue to actual. So you have your budget and then you have your actual. You have your revenue budget and your revenue actual. So back in two thousand ten, this district was running on a deficit. And this district did not have, not a dime extra to spend on anything throughout the year or through their budget. And there were numerous newspaper articles talking about how this district just overspent their budget and, um, just was not being fiscally responsible at that time. So how did they fix that problem? Well, if you look at the next slide, you'll see that, what did they do the next year? You had an eleven point six eight percent tax increase, and that's how they fixed that problem. You went from a three point eight six tax increase to an eleven point five eight percent tax increase in order to fix that deficit problem. Now, you never want to be in that situation ever again. You never want to have to fix the problem by raising taxes almost twelve percent. And if that was actually a year that was under the tax cap, that would have failed, because you didn't even receive sixty percent voter approval for that. You barely, barely received fifty percent voter approval for that twelve, almost twelve percent tax increase. So you can't go back to that situation. So what's happened over time is, um, I think everyone in this district understood the, the, the point that we had to be a little more fiscally responsible and we had to find additional revenue sources. And over time, that's exactly what we, what the district has done. They've been on the budget side, they've been really, really, um, fiscally responsible, and you've been coming up with surplus every year on your budget side. That means that you've been underspending your budget every year. And on the revenue side, you're coming in really right on target or maybe a little bit under some years. But overall, you can see that you've had surplus. So you went from a deficit situation of three hundred and seven thousand to a surplus situation of two point three million because of that twelve percent tax increase. And then from there, you did have surpluses going on. And part of this surplus was used to appropriate, um, or fund your ensuing year's budget. Part of this money was put aside in reserves, which were, um, much needed in the district, because at that time, you really didn't have any emergency funds. So, um, when I say that a budget must be conservative, you have to expect that mostly, a lot of your budget, you cannot project accurately, because you don't have the information at the time. So for instance, when you're budgeting back in January and February of two thousand nineteen and you're trying to figure out what you're going to be spending July first of nineteen to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty, you, there are many things you don't know. You don't know what your health insurance increases are going to be. You've had years where you've had health insurance increases of two percent. You've had years of health insurance increases of thirteen percent. There's no predicting. So if you're going to budget responsibly, you're probably going to budget for at least a ten percent increase in health insurance rates. So if that health insurance rate doesn't go up that much, you'll end up with some surplus. Another item you might not know about is, um, there's a lot of specialized costs that you cannot budget for, um, without knowing exactly what population you're going to have next year, who's going to move into the district. We've had years where we had families move into the district with three high need students and, and with three high need students, and that would be it. Your budget would be done right there. So you have to make sure you budget enough money for any incoming special needs students, and then you also need to budget money for positions. So in the past, I think that, um, they've, we've always been able to sort of project if we do have retirements coming in, how much that new hire would cost. I mean, I know, um, a lot of times the laws change. You need to hire a specific, uh, position. I know in my district, since I was only a K six district, the laws changed. I needed to hire a body of counselor. So this district though has been spending years and years of, um, you know, where they've been trying not hire maybe every position that they had budgeted or maybe work it a different way, maybe change duties a little bit with the employees they currently have, so they could stay that way. So if you look now, your past two years of what happened to your surplus, you can see that you went from, in two thousand seventeen, you had one point eight million in surplus, and then you'll see the eight eighty-five and the six seventy-six. So that's a direct reflection of the dollars that have been spent on Stella. So the reason why your surplus has gone down just those past few years is because of the money spent and the budget transfers that have been approved for the Stella Morris project. So that's, you know, I was trying to kind of make everyone, um, I knew the question maybe would be, well, how could our budget sustain such additional costs if they weren't originally included in the budget to begin with, but that's how. You know, every April, I know when I was here, um, I, I knew in April exactly how much surplus I would have left in the budget. And there would be projects in the district that I knew that needed to get done, and we would fund them with that surplus. And just because, um, you know, sidewalks had to get fixed and trees had to get pruned. And there were just things that needed to get done for health and safety wise. So, um, that would provide some background there. And then this is just over time. This has been your, um, your tax levy increases over time and, uh, your, but your basically how many people have been coming out. And really, the district has tried very hard. You've been under the cap every single year since the tax cap has been in place. And, um, your tax levy increases have been, uh, very reasonable compared to what they were, uh, before the tax levy laws. This is the list of the future projects. So a lot of these things were from that original list from May, and they don't need to get done right away. Um, you know, just talking with, uh, Katie and Matt, the classroom furniture is something that you don't need to do right away, because we have a lot of furniture already in the district that could be transported to the building. The mechanical system replacement doesn't have to get done right away. Uh, you know, Scott could talk about the theatrical lighting system, the sound system, that's something that doesn't have to get done right away. Uh, the kitchen equipment, I know there's a lot of talk about the kitchen and whether or not, what it would be used for. So that's something that could maybe, um, not get done immediately. These last two items are things that need to get done though. So, um, the title on the slide is you could fund some of these items with your remaining bond funds. You could include a transfer of capital in your twenty twenty-one budget, or you could include it just as a budget item in your, um, operation budget to get some of this stuff done. Or you do have a very healthy capital reserve that you could have voter approval to use some of this capital reserve to get those, that work done. So right now, you're looking at eighteen nineteen, at the end of the eighteen nineteen year, you have two point four million dollars sitting in a capital reserve that could be allocated for future projects. And you also have almost one point eight million in repair reserve that could possibly be used to make some additional repairs to the building. So, um, but right now, I just want to talk a little bit more about the retaining wall and how, um, this is something that was discovered. Um, I believe it was discovered just a few weeks ago, and it was, uh, it's really a health and safety item that needs to get done. If the building, if you want the building to open up in January of, um, two thousand twenty, uh, it should get done immediately. And, um, you could possibly use the, uh, remaining bond funds to fund that. That projected cost right now is projected. The cost could be higher, it could be lower. Um, I think that Ed is here. He could probably describe the situation right now on, of that wall.
So as part of the renovations, which many of you saw in your walkthrough in the back, where we're actually redoing the drive, uh, for the secure drop-off for the children.
I'm just going to, I'm going to excuse myself from, I'm recused from discussing this issue.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay.
So as part of that, um, what the district had in the back, where we're actually redoing the drive and where we're regrading that area, was a series of planners that was on their property that were removed along with the soil in order to make room for the new drive and the new grading. When we did that, it was, we were able to, and once that, all that demolition was done, we were able to actually ascertain the true construction of the neighboring property retaining walls that were in place. Uh, there currently is a, a real concern from our engineering standpoint of the current condition of those structures and how they were originally designed and put in. So one of the things that we talked about is what the district can entertain is creating their retaining wall on their property to actually brace those walls, uh, all along that back drive. It wouldn't change the drop-off drive. It wouldn't change the design of our back. It would actually just add a wall in place, uh, along that drive in order to brace those two existing walls that are not on the district's property.
Have the neighbors complained? Because my understanding that there might be litigation issues here, right?
Currently, there are not. Um, we have been working with the district's attorneys to make sure that everything is, is, um, all according to what needs to be done. Uh, and the district's attorneys have, uh, engaged both residents, um, so that they're in, uh, in talks with them as well. So...
Yeah, and I think that if we were, um, if we don't do the retaining wall now, then I think that would jeopardize opening the building in January, um, just because we can't, I mean, in order to, um, fully say that that drop-off point is completely safe, um, the retaining wall needs to get fixed. And, uh, the attorneys right now basically saying that if we do the retaining wall, make all the repairs to retaining wall, and if there's any future way that we could possibly, um, get some of the money back from the neighbors, we would of course try and do that, um, if we felt that, uh, you know, that, that it was their responsibility. But right now, the issue is just safety and safety of, um, that drop-off location and just trying to get the work moving so that it could be opened, in fact, in January of two thousand twenty.
One of the things, just to clarify, Jennifer, I just wanted to add to that is, please keep in mind, um, and again, based on our discussions with the district's attorneys and things we're looking at, what this cost represents is the district would create their own wall. So it would be on your property. We would not be touching the walls that currently exist that are on the neighbor's property. Um, so it would be all your property and we wouldn't be in violation of any boundary lines or any property.
And we could guarantee that the work is done the proper way. That's how we guarantee it as opposed to...
So that, but it's, it's something, we're not, we're not actually physically touching the neighbor's walls other than we're potentially looking at fill between the two walls, obviously, because you don't want a large gap there. But, um, the physical built structure would be on the district's property, not on the neighbor's. But the physical built structure would be on the district's property, not on the neighbor's property.
So let me ask you, so if we decide to go ahead with this, what's the timeframe? And is this gonna impact opening and generating?
I think we're, what we would like to do is begin immediately with it. So our structural engineer is actually finalizing the design now. And when, the next step would be, we're sending it to the contractor just for pricing, just to make sure that our numbers, as Jennifer was saying, are accurate. And so, and at that point too, we would also allow the district's attorneys to engage the neighbors and allow them to share our design with them, so they know what's coming, so they know what's being built immediately adjacent to their property. And so that's our next steps, but we would do it immediately, again, in trying to prepare for that general completion.
But Jennifer, what are the implications and like options to fund it? Cause you said we can fund it from the fund balance, so we can go from like the budget.
So right now, because this is such, the, the time restrictions on getting this done are so important for us. This is something you would wanna use bond funds for. So you have the 268,000 dollars sitting in the capital fund. So that's something that you could use immediately. If you want to do it another way, we would have to go through the budget. We'd have to see if there's any surplus items in our current budget. Right now, that like I could, like I just explained, health insurance rates, my health insurance rates aren't out yet. So I can't even tell you whether or not I would have additional money lying around in my budget for it. So, and then of course, transfer capital or any voter approved use of capital reserves couldn't happen until May. So really, the only option for that one item would be using the funds that are sitting in the capital fund, the bond funds right now, so using that 268,000 to pay for this retaining wall. And I think that if the board agrees to do that today, then they could move forward with all their designing and planning and hiring contractors as opposed to bringing everyone back in the room, let's say in another week, to talk about how you're gonna get this work done. We might have a better price for you in another week, but the work still has to get done.
And then if we don't use that 268, what happens to it?
You're probably not gonna be able to get the wall done right now, that's the problem. And then you're not gonna be able to open the building on, on the current timeline.
Could we transfer it from the budget item or some?
Yeah, right now, the budget is pretty tight. So when I, when I say to you that I normally look at my budget and I know how much surplus I have after the new year, it really is. Because that health insurance, the health insurance is such a big piece of budget. As soon as those health insurance rates come out, I could really know exactly how much money I have sitting in a health insurance line. But as I said, those rates aren't out yet. And those rates are probably not gonna be out until like mid-November or, you know, towards the end of November. So I wouldn't count on that right now, but I would definitely count on, you know, we did a full accounting of every single dollar in the capital fund. We know you definitely have this in the capital fund. And that's, you know, that's really the best option right now in my recommendation is to, is to use those funds. And then you, you, you're gonna have surplus in the general fund if the health insurance rates are low. And if other items, if other costs are reduced next year, and you might be able to use that for some of these other things, if you decide to move forward with them.
So it sounds like you're asking us to take board action tonight to approve moving forward with the proposal on this.
I think that would be the smartest thing to do is to actually take forward action tonight so that you don't have to come back in another week, just because we know how important this is to just get this done immediately. And we know that we included an estimate of 125, we're hoping that it's not higher than that. If it is, of course, we would come back to the board and talk to you about what the actual estimates come, came in at. But I think tonight, if you do decide to get the retaining wall done or if you decide maybe to come back next week and make that final decision, then that would be great. As long as we know that this is something that's gonna, you know, eventually happen. Because from everything that I've been told, the, it's gonna be very difficult to open the building on, on the current timeline without getting that retaining wall fixed.
Where did that number come from? Was that a bid?
That.
That's an estimate that we generated.
From what?
From our office, based on data of doing similar types of retaining walls at other districts.
And the current wall is on the, not on the school's property, it's on neighbor's property. That was existing there?
Yes.
So we purchased that with that wall being on our neighbor's property, so called.
Yes, is it, the, the current retaining walls that exist are, the property line is just in front of them. And so it's, those are on the neighbor's property.
Okay. I mean, I don't know about you guys, I, I'm available next week, I'd prefer to not rush into anything. I don't know if we can get four people together next week. If you guys are ready to, to approve it tonight and it's another option, I just.
Question for our lawyer about that, I don't understand that why it's not ours? Why is it not ours then?
What?
The retaining wall is currently.
It's on their property.
No, the neighbors have a retaining wall and it's compromised, so it would impact our property if it fails.
And you, when did you find this out? This was just a couple of.
No, this was when we finished the demolition, which I'm trying to remember when that was. And that's when we entered into discussions with the neighbor about it.
About it, and then you were able to look at it and find, and then you knew that at that time when you dug in, that wasn't.
I wanna, I wanna be clear though too, keep in mind, what we're looking at from our investigation, what we've evaluated on the walls, there's nothing that's currently compromised based on the construction that we did. We're looking at the walls on how they were actually built, and they're not built to today's standards. They're not built according to what you would do now if you were to build a retaining wall, and that's our concern. It's not that the wall is, has fallen down or has, has been compromised. It's the fact of what we're looking at as far as how it was built, we're concerned that that's not how we would approach doing the retaining wall now in order to secure that bank.
I feel like this is an issue that has, the board is aware of it. I don't feel like this is something that's been sprung on us tonight. I am actually ready to authorize the funds to repair the situation tonight, if, if other board members feel the same way. Simply because I, I, I don't want to, us waiting another week or, or anything else. I kinda agree with Jennifer, we, if we have the funds left over in the bond and that's the easiest way to fund it, really all we're doing is authorizing the payment of something that wasn't in the original scope of the project. So they'll work out with the neighbors, the details of it. We're just authorizing that they have the money to do something that wasn't on the original list, which I have no problem with, because I know that's something that needs to be done. So for me personally, I'm ready to move forward to authorize that, that money.
One question I have is when we, the three of us met with the mayor of the village, she had mentioned, she had asked us a question about why the building wasn't being put on the sewage system for the village. And I just wanna know, if that's an option for the future, how does this retaining wall impact any of that future digging or anything like that? Because.
None of it.
That's honestly my biggest concern.
Yeah, it's on the other side.
Okay.
And yeah, and actually, if that's a question, I, I think some of the board members may remember, but there's a very large cost, and that's what it's prohibited, because the end of the system is actually closer to the case work building. It's further down the street, so we'd have to extend it all the way to our building and pay for tying into all of the properties. Yeah, yeah, as it goes. So the cost, when we took a look at it, was just prohibitive to be able to do that.
So you should give the will of the board.
Does anyone wanna, I mean, I guess it's not even a will of the board, it's, does anyone wanna make a motion to?
The only question we said, you wanted to set legally with the attorney.
Yeah, I, that's one of the reasons I, I'd rather wait on that. Thank you. I'd like to have some more information. I'm not completely understanding the legal issue there with the, where the wall is and whose wall it is. And also, is it gonna make a difference if we did this next week after we got some more information?
Actually, as long as, I guess one of the things we could ask is, is it all right to continue investigating this option as far as proposing a solution? Finding out the cost of the solution, the exact cost of the solution through the contractors? And then also negotiating with the neighbors as to what we're proposing for the solution? If it's okay to proceed with that, we're not saying that we're actually building anything yet, but those are steps that are all necessary before we can even tell the contractor, okay, go. So if, if it's all right, if we continue to investigate those steps, that would be, that would, that would be very helpful for us.
If what we're talking about is not authorizing funds, but for them to have discussions, maybe get a bid into negotiation, then that sounds like a great idea.
Fine, is everyone?
Yes, cause I have some questions as far as the wall. The, and I'm not quite sure why the neighbors have any input on that wall, our wall that we're building. Why, why do they have an input on the wall that they, we're building for the learning center?
They, they actually don't. If it, you know, the wall that's being built on your property, they really don't have a say. They're concerned that any construction will compromise their walls currently. And so that's where the negotiation is, is we just wanna make sure that they understand that our design isn't compromising their wall. But one thing that does have to happen is we do have to fill in between the two walls. We can't leave a big gap. That fill that we would be putting in there is on their property, so we do have to consult them about that. Because the, the property line is forward of it. So technically, we would be putting fill on their property, and that's something we wanna make sure that they're comfortable with and understand what we're doing in our, in agreement.
So I just wanna make sure, cause Katie's not here today, and I know when I met with her last week, she was very concerned about the retaining wall getting done immediately, because she thought it was gonna hold up some other things that had to get done along that area. So what is the, so what is the real timeline for you? Cause you're still looking to open the building. And what is the timeline of you doing this investigation? And, you know, the last time I spoke with you, I think you had said that you were gonna try to like have that cost ready, already for us. So how, I don't want them to think that, you know, this, how long is this gonna take? Is it a week? Is it, is it holding up construction in any other area? Because I know Paul, you're kind of like at the edge of your seat. And I know Katie was very concerned about this, so, and she's not here, so.
I mean, I guess, forgive me if I misheard, but it sounds like there's a chance to reconvene next week? Is that possible?
So you're definitely looking some, if next week they could agree and then you could go ahead and, yeah, and then you're still good.
That would be good. Um, I don't think that would negatively impact. If we're talking a month till another board meeting, that could be problematic.
Let me just confirm, when I did the last walkthrough, from what I remember is you have the neighbor's wall, and then under that is where we did all the excavation and everything. So it doesn't seem that it's structurally sound, right? The retaining wall that the neighbors have right now.
No, we, we excavated vertically.
Cause it doesn't go all the way down to the ground, does it?
We excavated vertically, we didn't actually excavate under the wall at all. We didn't touch anything.
Not under the wall, but like you can see now like where you excavated, it's like, I don't know if the retaining wall from the neighbors go all the way down to the bottom of the ground, does it?
Yeah, why isn't the retaining wall up to, up to speed at what we?
And I think that's the issue, that it's not structurally sound right now.
Yeah, we can't really, we don't know why it was designed the way it was. It basically, nor, normally when you do a retaining wall, well, and again, probably age too. We're not exactly sure of the exact age of the walls. We have actually, our construction manager tried to do some research with the village as well. And there were no drawings on village records for the walls, which was another problem. So we can't really verify even how the wall was exactly built, but just as you were gonna said, that the foundation of the wall is much higher than we would recommend or that way that we would approach it. So that's the problem that we're concerned about.
So I, I would agree with you, I would rather have like a real opinion of this, because it's a gray area, you know, it's our responsibility versus the neighbors. That we can do something that maybe doesn't please the neighbors and we could have legal implications. So I just wanna have more information.
I mean, one of, one of the approaches that we talked about the district and what we're kind of approaching, the way we are in discussions with the attorneys is that, the district's attorneys, if you build this wall on your property and you build it to take the, the loading of the bank, basically no matter what happens with whatever neighbors that may be behind you in the future, you're protected and protected that drive and you've protected your property. So that's kind of the, the idea or the approach is to build basically a protection screen. We're not saying that the walls will fail if ever in the future. We're just saying that we're concerned with what we see, and this would be a way of protecting your investment, protecting your property.
I mean, I think eventually we have to do it, because structurally what's there, it's not, it's not good.
So you have the will of the board to keep going?
Okay, great.
And unfortunately, we actually have to adjourn to executive session. Are you guys okay with just, we're gonna have to put a pin in the rest of today's agenda? And perhaps when we meet next week to talk about this again, we can, we can finish today's agenda then.
Your turn. Are, are there any other, anything else while Jennifer's here? Just because I, we may not, was there anything else you wanted to share with us, Jennifer?
No, I'm just, you know, I'm around, if you have any questions, just send them to me, email them to me, I'll get back to you. And, you know, I'm just so glad to be here and it was so nice to revisit the project. And it was really wonderful to walk the building and actually see all the work that was done.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
This is really, really helpful, and we can tell that a lot of work went into it.
Yes, we had a great team effort here.
You're welcome. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to interview interim superintendent?
I'm moving.
All in favor?